From the public?
No. All right. Well, some obviously got the right time. Very good. We'll focus on the positive. Welcome to our town hall here. Let me introduce myself, Mayor Jay Schlum, and thank you, everyone, from the public coming out here that's got interest in our town and want to share some feedback, comments, concerns, or ideas. It's great to have you here. Got today, we've got Vice Mayor Mike Archambeau. And Dennis and I really started kicking this idea around about eight months ago about having a town hall, and then we had to figure out how to structure it properly. But Councilmember Dennis Contino is here, and the others are not here because then we really couldn't dialogue around a whole lot of items because of Arizona's very stringent open meeting law. So the other members would love to have been here, and that's why we're going to have two more additional town halls. The next one will be in the summer, so watch Fountain Hills Times for the accurate information on the dates and times for that, and the town website. And then, but I also did put a sign-in sheet out by the trees, which are going to be available at 2:30 when we wrap up. If you want to put your name and email address down to make sure you're aware of the next town hall or other town events and functions. This is a format of kind of what I call an old-fashioned town hall. You know, everything's going to be available. I'll give a, I'll go over a couple of items initially that are probably top of mind to a lot of people to kind of stimulate some things, and then, but you can chime in at any time. We have a microphone here that we want to get in your hand if you have a question, comment, concern, or idea to share. So don't start talking too early, and it's all videotaped, so it'll be streaming on the Internet as well for those thousands of people at home that are watching. Let's see here. As I said, we're going to have some timely, relevant items at each town hall. Tonight, we're going to, or today, we're going to be going over, I'll be going over a little bit of the town finances and then some economic development folks. All right. One note is Vice Mayor Archambeau is here because we had, he's filling in, fortunately, for Councilmember Keith McMahon, who was originally going to be here today with Dennis and I. So thanks, Mike, for coming in, but I think most everyone knows we lost Keith about 10 days ago. He passed away, so we're all missing him, and we've all said some real nice things about him, and I know the community is mourning, and you just think of Keith everywhere you go. Everywhere, every place, he's got his impression on our town, and we're missing him deeply. So thank you, Mike, for coming away from your event and being here, and thank you to many staff members that have spent a couple hours of their weekend with us today to help us understand items that might come up more directly. Thank you very much, and I really want to appreciate, share the appreciation of the residents that are interested enough and care enough to come out and be a part of this dialogue. Again, it's our first town hall in quite some time, so there'll probably be some rough edges, so make sure you share your comments either directly or indirectly with me or the rest of the council. First item I'm going to go over is kind of some financial updates, since I think that's everybody's top of mind. Well, first, I want to recognize former Mayor Wally Nichols is over there. Very nice to see you. You're looking good. Looking good, even tan, tanned up, too. But it's great to have you guys here. Okay, so up on the PowerPoint here, we're going to show a little bit of a snapshot of where we are financially. As you know, all municipalities here are challenged with finances of late around the world, not just in our country, but specifically in Fountain Hills. We're set up with a general fund, and then we have separate funds that can't be kind of cross-pollinated with one another. Herf funds and special revenue funds, you see downtown excise tax funds, debt service funds, and then capital project funds, which is a larger fund, and then our newly established public art fund. General fund has been the focus primarily on operations, and that's the day-to-day cost of having employees, running programs, and numerous other things that we'll show you more of. Here's the revenues here that are expected. State shared revenues this year are $6.8 million, and you can see what the breakdown there of state shared revenues are. Income tax that's shared back with the municipality and state sales tax, vehicle license tax, and herf funds of $1.7 million. And then local revenues, sales taxes, and fees, permits, licenses, and the other items. That's our budgeted revenues. This, this bar chart and display shows general fund revenues and expenditures. It shows actual general fund revenues and expenditures, and you can see going back to '02, '03, the expenditures and revenues were right on, I don't know if it was right on budget, but it was, it equaled one another. Then you can see our revenue started to climb as construction was rampant here in our town, and we grew revenues, and we had surpluses over those years, and we grew our fund balance as was requested or not demanded. Julie, what's the right term? Suggested fund balance to ensure that we had a good savings against council-approved. Yeah? And so there began to save, and we've got a general fund balance that we're going to maintain, around $6.6 million, is it, Julie? Yeah. So we were able to put monies away. We didn't spend everything that came in, thankfully, and as you can see now, revenues are dropping, and in fiscal year '07, '08, last year, there was about $1 million that was put into the capital improvement plan. Now that we've got our general fund balance savings where we wanted it, now we've got a policy that any surpluses go into the capital improvement plan. They don't just roll over to next year's operational spending. And you can see where we are this year, or where we expect to be this year. We've had to make some adjustments in order to bring things into alignment, given that the downturn in the economy was even greater than what was budgeted by our, by our council and staff. Fortunately, we're very conservative, and our budget number last year going into this year did drop, where other municipalities and particularly the state level, they raised their budget this year, and we reduced ours a good amount. So fortunately, we don't have as much to make up because of our conservative approach to the budget. And you can see next year's expenditures and revenues are going to continue to decline, and staff's been working very hard and somewhat painfully to reduce those as we prepare for our next year's budget discussions coming up over the next couple of months. There's a pie chart, a good snapshot of where do the operational, the general fund revenues go. You can see perhaps the big red piece, appropriate color, for emergency services, fire and police, make up 41% of our budget expenditures. So just to keep us safe with our fire contract and our police contract make up 41% of our overall general fund expenditures. The balances that make up the rest, you can see public works, you know, working on the streets and other items there, 12%. Operational support of 8%. General things at 13%. Zoning and building items at 10%. Community center at 8%, and parks at 8% as well. That's where the money goes by percentage and also by dollar amount there. This year, we're budgeted for $16.1 million, is that right, Julie? And now we're reduced to about what amount are we? 15. So on the fly, we've had to make those adjustments. As you saw from the chart back here, revenues are expected to be below, be low expenditures, so we've had to adjust down another million or so from what was budgeted. And what was budgeted was about $600,000 less than what we budgeted last year. And here's the actual versus the budgeted expenditures over the many years. The actuals are the darker bar charts, and then the budget is the number above it, so you can see where we're at right now. The budget was much higher on expenditures, and we've always seemed to spend a lot less than what was budgeted. That'll be more difficult as the numbers and the reality of the downturn have hit us. But we will continue to have a balanced budget. We may not have the surpluses we've had over the time, as you can see here, but we will continue to balance our budget. Here's where we've made up this year thus far. Staff has done a lot of work in helping us to close the gap so far. $734,000 have been found in being innovative and looking to save money anywhere we can because the, what we budgeted for is not going to be there. So we've revised our budgets, we've reduced our expenses, and here are the areas that have been impacted. We've not hired where we had vacancies in positions. We've reduced staff that were in positions by having to let some staff go. We've reduced some expenses thanks to some skills or talents on hand here with our staff, and Rick ran our facilitation of our goal-setting meeting, so that saved us money, but $47,000 in other areas similar to that. As I said, staff and others have been innovative with doing more with less through a variety of different areas, but a pretty significant savings. These items were all budgeted to be spent this year, but staff has found ways to get around them without, without affecting our quality of service here in Fountain Hills too dramatically. So that's just this year. This year's budget ends in the summertime here. And here's where positions are. You can see in '02, '03, we had 106 full-time equivalent, is that the right term, Julie? Positions, and we've had to reduce, obviously dropped dramatically, and then we've had to reduce again just this year to get down to our budgeted ability to spend. Yeah, who's, and we don't have a quarter of people, these are full-time equivalents, so there are .25 on there.
You're just paying one three-quarters of them.
Exactly, they're very, yeah. But this certainly doesn't count volunteers and such. These are folks that are being paid, but they encompass full-time and part-time employees, so that's why you've got some .25s in there and such. Certainly, the economy still continues to be weak. There's been some good reports this last week that the bottom seems to be approaching, but as far as town finances go, particularly state shared revenues, we're getting those about a year in arrears, is that right, Julie? Two years in arrears. So we will continue to have to drill down on our budget for the next couple of years. Will be very challenging. So although the economy may pick up, retail stores may pick up here sooner than later, we hope, the town will have to budget for something other than that. The town, the state, as I mentioned, their budget deficits affect our state shared revenues. The state's shared revenues are a percentage against what the state brings in, so we get a proportional amount back, and then that also reduces every year because our population doesn't grow as quickly as some of the other suburbs and the metro area in particular. So we continue to get a smaller and smaller piece of that state shared revenue every year here in Fountain Hills. And then, of course, we're all eyeing the two square miles of former state trust land that Elman purchased because Fountain Hills has been largely funded. A lot of our services through construction impact fees and sales taxes, or construction sales taxes, and the Elman project being pushed off for another year or so is, we need to keep that in mind when we continue to budget. When that kicks in, it will help fund some programs and fund the resources needed to keep up with that development as well. But we do fortunately have a tremendous bank of volunteers that help provide support to our staff and also help maintain things on their own, not just at the town level, but obviously through our organizations in our town that we're so proud of. Business Week magazine, you probably all heard, rated Fountain Hills the best affordable suburb in Arizona last month, so that was outstanding. It's not the most affordable, it's the best affordable. Know some are surprised that we're considered affordable, but, you know, we are, I guess, nowadays, it seems like a great time to purchase real estate out here in Fountain Hills. But being rated the best affordable suburb, we have a lot of great things going for us, so that was a feather in our cap for sure. And just in '06, Phoenix Magazine rated Fountain Hills the best place to live in the Valley, so we were rated number one there. I think we were number two last year to Scottsdale, but we think they screwed up on their, their judging somehow. But we've, our staff has received numerous awards as well at the town level, and we have a lot to be proud of, and we, the core of our community are volunteers and organizations, and fortunately, we don't, we aren't reliant upon big car dealerships and other things. Their discretionary income, when it's reduced, can dramatically affect the municipality. But it's generally, we're where we are without a great deal of pain, particularly as much pain as the other cities around us have felt, Mesa, Phoenix, others, because we've been very conservative in our approach for a number of years with budgeting, and then, of course, we reduced our budget this year from the get-go, which was a very good move. Of course, the downturn was nothing that anyone expected, didn't expect anything this severe, so we've had the great work of the staff who worked early and often to continue to address our challenges there. We've got roads to work on, though, and we have reduced budgets to work on roads. Our washes and open space continue to need maintenance to fend off against the threat of fire and stormwater management, and then we are dependent on state shared revenues. So if the economy continues to decline, and as I said, we get revenues two years in arrears from the state, we haven't seen the worst yet from our state shared revenues. And we'd love to have some more economic development, so that's going to be our sustainability will be measured on how well we develop our economic base. I'm sure there'll be a question or comment from the public on that item when we get there. But that's my presentation. I wanted to go over kind of an update on where we are with our budget, and let me point out a couple things here that are related to the budget. Folks probably want to know a little bit about the stimulus, which has been making, obviously, a lot of news. Fountain Hills has a seat at the Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Council, and the mayor, I sit on that council, and we've been divvying up some stimulus dollars. The divvying has been on an amount that's considerably smaller than what everyone expected, but we did just recently divvy up a portion that would affect Fountain Hills, and Fountain Hills was awarded just over $1 million of $104 million total pot that went to the 20-some communities, including Phoenix and others that are much larger. Phoenix, I believe, received $35 million. Towns, the divvying up was done on a formula where every community that's a part of MAG would get $500,000 at a minimum, and then the balance remaining was divvied up by population. So Fountain Hills ended up with about $1 million. Our neighbors at Fort McDowell, just over $500,000. Of course, the larger communities received a larger piece. Our staff had prepared our needs list in a very effective way. If we had gone by the formulas that we thought we were going to be going by, Fountain Hills would have received closer to $5 million of that $100 million. But there were larger communities to us that would be receiving smaller amounts, and I think politically that would have been very hard to swallow, and a compromise was arrived at by the management committee and the transportation committee, and was agreed to in, in the majority at the regional council level, so that's how we arrived at that. But no one was pleased. Everyone, the buildup to the stimulus, everybody was expecting far more money to stimulate the local economy, to get people to work, and to make up, in essence, for a lot of decreases because of the economic downturn. So that's an update there on the stimulus at the MAG region. Our town has put together a stimulus team made up of some volunteers that are right here in the audience and staff. Because we don't have the lobby lobbyists and others to track everything at the federal level, many of the federal agencies haven't even yet come up with guidelines to disperse the revenues, and I'm sure in the light of AIG, they're looking at those guidelines a little more closely, so I'm not sure when we're going to get those. They'll be trickling out, and they're coming from numerous agencies, so there is more stimulus dollars to come, and we're going to do our best to be positioned to get our hands on as much of that as we can. Now, there are some areas you've heard where people are turning away stimulus dollars for philosophical reasons, it seems, or political reasons, but we're at the reality that for or against the stimulus idea in the first place, it's been signed, the money's going out the door, and we're going to make sure Fountain Hills gets their fair share, and we're going to be responsible to not build aviaries or things along the lines that might be embarrassing. We have needs, and they'll be in the roads and around our community, be it Shea Boulevard, Saguaro Boulevard, or others. You'll be proud of what we spend those federal dollars on, so we'll make sure we do our best to get those dollars. Let's open up for comments or questions on the economy or stimulus in that area, and then we'll, then we'll move on to economic development. We've got a microphone. Let me get that. Thank you. Is the carpet here? Is it working? Yep, here we go.
Can we do anything with this stimulus money to help Casenoff buy the 13 acres and get it underway?
All right. The question was, can we get, do anything with the stimulus to get the 13 acres going? And, no, not really, no. They're really going to watch that the money's going to infrastructure items in particular, and the fact is that there's so much less than what we were all expecting, that type of project would be way down the list. Economic development is a part of that, that they'd like to see an increase there. But at this point, the team's going to keep their eyes on whatever opportunities there are. If that is available, I'm sure we'll look at it, not necessarily to help fund a private project, but if there's a way to do something that would benefit the public with those dollars that makes sense, then maybe that's, that is something we would consider. I think everything is on the table. We know how important our downtown is to the future of our economy, so that's a good question, I think. It's targeted as far as, you know, we've got our eye on it, and if there's something there to do something with it.
Where are we at right now?
We are. As far as the downtown development there, we're still have a development agreement.
Still waiting.
Still waiting for the property to be closed on and moved forward, so the town has done whatever we can to help that parcel of land get developed. If there is something from stimulus that would make sense, then I'm sure we would consider it. Do you guys have any comments on those items?
Pretty much everything.
All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. My name's Richard Kloster, Eagle Mountain, and I was wondering with the must and the wants and the restrictions you have with the allocated money, where safety and a fire department bill to service better the outlying areas that we've discussed before would rank? Certainly, you've mentioned streets, roads, that sort of thing, that's safety also, but certainly the fire department would rank pretty high there also. Your comments?
Absolutely. That's on our target. As far as the MAG Regional Council, those are largely transportation, oops, transportation items. So the fire departments and those things don't show up on a MAG list, and that's the, that's just this one allocation from the stimulus, is they come through the regional cooperative councils at the county level typically, and that's what Maricopa Association of Governments is. The first allocation was about $150 million or so, and went straight to highway projects, almost all in the West Valley and central I-17 corridor. There's a large, big story to a good portion of that and some challenges between MAG and ADOT, but we did allocate the dollars, and those need to be allocated quickly. And then the second batch was that sub-allocated piece, that the $104, $104 million that we had to divvy up between the 27 areas, but those went to arterials or heavy collectors. They all went to transportation projects, not to fire departments and those sorts of things, but that's on our target. Our task force is looking at getting funding for a fire department, certainly. Hef, Bert?
Given the importance of the Elman property to our increasing our revenue, the Supreme Court case notwithstanding, have we heard anything from the Elman people as to whether they would even be able to start, given this economy, even if the Supreme Court was not an issue to hold them up?
Maybe I might ask staff, because there may be dialogue going on with staff until this gets resolved. I'm not really aware of things. I know the economy's obviously a factor. Rick, do you have any update on Elman?
Last conversations I've had with folks from that, that organization is that they're eager to get going with the project, and we hope soon after April 20th, we'll have some direction at that time, if not resolution to the issue, but, you know, this is, it's interesting to note that despite the economic inversion that seems to continue to hang over the country, Arizona's still a very desirable place to be, and that's, that is the ace we have up our sleeve, is this is just a great state. Yeah, look, yeah, so, yeah, case in point. So we anticipate that as soon as things can move ahead, they will. I don't think there's anything else in the way there.
It's very key. We have to also understand that any revenues that come in from construction need to be treated as one-time, one-time revenues, and we have to be very careful not to program these one-time monies into ongoing programs and expenditures. So we still look at the pillars of our financial stability, which unfortunately, when it comes to local government's taxation, that is the only thing that makes a community stable. Everything else is the same thing that everybody else lives off of, and it's kind of hard to run emergency services and public works and all those things on the same cycles that seem to affect every other retailer out there, which is literally what we're doing right now. So we're going to do our very best with the resources we have, though.
Don't give an entertainer a microphone.
You've got any rumors that Congress is going to take our bonus at 90%?
Well, that's true. I'm not, wouldn't hold it past them, I guess, right now. We're not budgeting for that right now, I don't think, but, good. Oh, yes, back here. And thanks again, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I don't think I need that. I have a very vibratic voice. My name is Ann Corso. I'm a resident here, and I'm here on behalf of those that are incapable of walking and parking in the areas that we have. Unfortunately, over here, we have places to park and walking areas that we can't park in between, otherwise there's a $245 fine, okay? Now, there's people that have lived here all year round that know this. Consequently, during the time that we don't have visitors, it's pretty good. During the time that we do have visitors, the people that come in, that run out of their cars, jump out of their cars, meet their neighbors, are parking in the areas where people cannot walk. I, myself, have a lung condition, a heart condition, and I'm full of arthritis. I don't consider myself handicapped, but I can't walk very far, and there are so many others like myself. I wish there were something that in, in some way, Jay, you and the councilmembers could agree on taking some of that walking area out and leaving us park in between, because we can park in between, there's enough room, but the walking area is there. So consequently, I'd like to see something done, and I hope that when you have your meeting and you discuss it between yourselves, that you come up with something that will help us who are handicapped, not just saying, well, we had legwork done how many years ago, we had a heart done how many years ago. You're supposed to exercise if these things are done, but if you can't walk, you can't exercise your legs, so please take into consideration those that cannot walk.
Good. Well, thank you for sharing that. And that's, is it primarily within the civic plaza here at the community center?
Yes. Because, actually, see, I was told, I was told, and excuse me for sitting, but if you notice, I lose my, my air capacity. I was told if I parked there, I wouldn't be fined, right? Or if I was fined, to take it to court. Well, I don't want to make any trouble for anybody, and I don't want to go to court.
I wanted to make sure I understood the area. Is it, it's not a community-wide thing, it's, you're speaking specifically of the community center?
Because naturally, see, I was told, I was told, and excuse me for sitting, but if you notice, I lose my, my air capacity. I was told if I parked there, I wouldn't be fined, right? Or if I was fined, to take it to court. Well, I don't want to make any trouble for anybody, and I don't want to go to court.
I wanted to make sure I understood the area. Is it, it's not a community-wide thing, it's, you're speaking specifically of the community center parking area? Okay. Well, good. I don't know if we can, anyone comment on that now? Tom, do you have any thoughts on that, or something we could, could work on?
Sure.
You're going to comment on the same item? Okay, good. I don't want to move on till we talk about that for a few minutes, and I bet your, our council member Cantino has some comments on that.
I don't know if I even need this. Oh, well, my name is Gloria A. Zalik, and she's commenting on the area at the community center where it has the handicap signs for parking. Now, the worst day is Monday, because there's bingo, and there's a lot of people, and there's also this card playing, I don't know what that is, in the second room, which they rent that room, and there's a huge, no, it's not bungalow, it's bridge, I believe, bridge. And Monday is your only really day that that happens. And I thought, you know, if they didn't want to go through all that trouble and fixing signs, making more parking, if they had someone, I don't know, a volunteer or a pay person on Monday for only the handicap, because I alone had taken her car, and I, there was a place, but all the way far that she could not walk, so I alone took that, and I said, we had like a volunteer person or someone only on Monday, see if this is a handicapped person, take their car and put it, park it for them, right, almost like a valet, instead of going with spending a lot, a lot of money, and like she said, she parked between, but if there's a handicapped person that has a cart or a bigger door, they're not going to get out of there, then you're going to have complaints again that a handicapped person, I don't know what the allotted space is, I mean, I think they know how much space there should be between each handicap, and if they start squeezing that, they're not going within the law.
I think, I'm sure that's the balancing act, but being aware of the challenge and being thankful that you've come to share it, that helps so that we can address what we can do under the law.
I love Gloria, Gloria has done favors for me, parked the car, but it is not only on Monday.
Okay.
Monday when it's
That's a, that's a
We have several things going at that community center, and several of the things that aren't going are very interesting to those that don't live here all the time, because they don't have the hearing functions that we have. So consequently, I feel, measure the area. You know, they complained that there were nicks on the door, right? That people were nicking the door. If you don't care about your car and you open your door like a mad person, that, there's a difference. But if you act like a human being and consider your next-door neighbor, you don't just throw your door open, you watch where you're going.
Good.
And I think there's enough room there, even if you look into it, there's enough room there, because there's definitely room between parking in the area where you walk and opening your doors, because I've done it.
Well, good, and I know there's going to be federal guidelines that we need to stay within, or else we'll get in trouble, but I think knowing about a challenge and being able to look at it and see what can be improved upon is what this is all about.
I certainly appreciate the opportunity you have given me, and the council member also, thank you.
Well, thanks for making the extra effort to get in here. I hope it was not too bad parking today, but, Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor. I know where she's talking about, and I think what we need to do is just expand the handicap parking. And I think what's happened is that these people are pulling up parking with handicap stickers and aren't really 100% handicapped, where they can just get out of their car and walk, or it's meant for a spouse. And what's going on now is that they're taking in parking in there, and I think the other thing is we've got to realize that none of us are getting any younger. We're going to get there, whether we like it or not. And there's people sitting here in this audience that are the same way, and I'm sure that if there's no handicap spot someplace and you've got to walk, and I've done it myself, it doesn't make any difference, you just have to walk. So I think if we looked at it and put more handicap up on that front row, right beside the, right there by the community center, that we would be helping our seniors out quite a bit, and that's who we have to think about.
I think that's, that's an excellent point, is the fact that we moved the senior center in there, and I don't, we probably have the appropriate, we probably have the appropriate amount of parking spaces there, considered the size of the building, but I don't know if we've considered the fact that we have the senior services working out of there, and if maybe we don't need, like where the sidewalk goes between those mediums, and you get on this side, which would be what, the west side of that, that particular row, and maybe need to add a few more handicap parking spaces there, right where the sidewalk is, so they don't have to go around the medium, they can actually use that area. But I think maybe one of the things, and Samantha's not here today, but maybe one of the things we need to consider is, is looking at that, look at who's using, you know, the community center during, during the day, and how many handicap spots we need, maybe take that into consideration. But one of the things we've got to be careful of, is we're going to take so many parking spaces away, that then we don't have room for an event that we're having, you know, and nobody can park in the handicap spots, and you see everybody parking over here, and all of a sudden, there's no more spots left, and there's 10 handicap spots left.
Mike, if I could
Yes.
Mayor, if I could
If I could maybe add something to that, and if Samantha was here, she would cover it. We've had this problem, and on the Senior Services Commission, I serve on that commission, we have a Parking and Building Space Utilization Committee that are looking into it. We are in trouble having enough spaces. We have 1,137 members now. Last year, we had 1,200. We think we're going to climb to 1,200 again this year, so it is an issue. I commend Sam and her staff. When we had problems on Friday mornings, the realtors are here from about 6:30 or 7:00 until 9:00. We have a lot of programs starting at 9:00 a.m., so there's probably a five or 10-minute overlap. If, if one group could clear, the other group coming in, it wouldn't be such a problem. But Sam and her group then opened up about 12 spaces. It's an extension on to the north of where the handicap spots are now, and for special events, they put signs up, and it's reserved for handicap parking, even though they're not designated as such.
And they're out right now. I saw them out right now. All right, so I think we talked about parking. That has come to the top. Senior Services Commission's working on that. Thanks for bringing this back to the commission, the additional feedback and
This is somewhat in the same vein, in a way. We seem to have a lot of signs that say, no skateboarding in this area or that area. Right in the, right out of the community center, that pathway that goes that way, there's a sign, no skateboarding. Choo, 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 regular. They come right past the community center down the sidewalk. The other thing is that Safeway, signs, 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 and I've been called to their attention, I say, can't you read that sign? You do go to school, don't you? You know, stuff like that. I've almost been bowled over. I'm not, I am not exaggerating when I tell you that. All of a sudden, somebody, whoa, and I think it's going to happen one day before, you know, I have to wonder, why isn't it enforced? Look, right here, by the police station. That's my gun.
Thank you. So more enforcement on skateboarding in the areas where the people are walking. I think it's a challenge. I've had a complaint just the other side, because they're, the only place I've told that the kids can skateboard is at the skate park. There's no way to skate to there, from there, or get around the community for them to do something. So there's got to be a balance somewhere, and I'm not sure what that is, but if it is posted, you're right. I've seen the signs, and that is, that is a law here. But they are using the skateboard park, they've been doing a good job using the skateboard park, I'm glad that's there for them, but, I mean, as, you know, we were all children, it was, you got to skateboard, you want to go use it, and there's really nowhere to use it unless you get dropped off or can walk to the skateboard park, so that's a balance, and it's also an enforcement balance, you know, what, where are we going to spend our energies and monies on enforcing with the sheriff's office? But hopefully, there won't be an accident. Yes, thank you.
I'd just like to ask a question. I know Julie said we're two years behind in getting state revenue funds. I don't want to be negative, but if there is a possibility that the commercial crunch happens in Phoenix, which we really haven't felt yet, from what I've read, are we looking at the contingency of possibly not seeing those funds even further out? That's one of them, and I do agree with you, Rick, that we're not always going to have development monies and funds, so we need to look at economic development, which I know we're going to talk about later.
Julie, you want to comment on that?
Thank you. Yes, the state shared revenue, primarily the income tax is what the two-year lag is, and so we anticipate that two years from now, we're going to, the state is going to be getting income tax from corporations and individuals based on this year, so for the next couple of years, we will have that downturn. The commercial, because we don't have a high commercial revenue, you know, we won't feel it as bad as some of the bigger cities. But the other piece of that is, once we start developing the Elman property, hopefully we'll be able to pick up some of that slack from that, if that moves forward. So we're, we're being cautiously optimistic about that, but that's only one piece of the state shared revenues. The other pieces is the vehicle license tax and the sales tax, and there's no lag on that one, it's just the income tax. So the vehicle license tax, once they start selling cars again and people start buying new cars, that should pick up, and if the economy starts picking up, then the state sales tax will pick up, and then, of course, then that means that we'll pick up there as well. Thank you.
And we are budgeting, we're already planning to budget for a smaller budget next year, and that will likely continue into the following year. It's just how, hopefully, we can manage the impact on our quality of life here in Fountain Hills and maintain services, but there'll be, there will be impacts, for sure. We have to be ready for that. Fortunately, we don't have those dramatic drops that other communities have because of the structure of our economy here. Mr. Kloster?
I just have a minor question, maybe you can address that. We're talking about sales tax. Is there any way you can track the drop in BASH's sales tax revenue to the town because of the construction, obviously? We only have three groceries, three major grocery stores in the community, Safeway, Fries, and BASH's, and BASH's been down for how long now? Better part of a year, and they're opening, but of course, that's right at the close of the fiscal year, so I don't know if you have a handle on that, or if it's that tangible. Maybe it was offset because of increased revenues at the Safeway and Fries, I'm not sure. Just curious, though.
Yes, Julie?
We did, when we knew and heard about BASH's closing down, we anticipated zero revenue from BASH's for a whole year. We did not anticipate that that revenue would be picked up somewhere else, because we didn't, we weren't sure what people were going to do. But as it does, it did turn out, the other grocery stores did pick up, so there's just been a very slight drop in overall of the grocery stores.
And I know that many are excited about BASH's reopening, not to mention our neighbors at Fort McDowell, Yavapai Nation are excited, as BASH's was the first grocer, right here, Mike, to make an investment early on.
I just want to make a point. Julie brought up a very good point. I don't know if you picked up on it, but it's the fact that she took that revenue for that shopping center out of our budget, and so when we saw the budget shortfalls happening this year, we actually had a cushion, because we didn't budget that money, so when we saw the extra revenue coming in from Fries and Safeway, you know, it was, it kind of helped us balance it out. And that's the one thing that we really all need to applaud, is that Julie keeps us toe-to-toe right to the line, won't let us go over it, and Rick's back there backing her up, and we're like, can we find something somewhere else, you know, because you're trying to keep the quality of life going? But if it wasn't for Julie and the staff and the council that you've got here, we'd be, we'd be, you'd be hearing about us just like you hear about Phoenix and everybody else. But this town is really run very efficiently, and as you can see, just from the graphs that we had up here.
Again, this town hall is for everybody. If you have a question, concern, comment, or great idea, feel free to bring it up at any time. And again, we've got Councilmember Cantino, Vice Mayor Oshambo here, and the others are not here because of open meeting laws. I know some of you came in late, just wondering where the rest of council members are. If you have more, if you have a quorum, you really can't discuss anything in, in any detail, so in order to have an open town hall, we had to limit it to three council members total, and the others will be invited to our next ones, it'll probably be in the summertime our next town hall. We had another question back here.
My name is Russ Allen.
Hi, Mayor Wally. My question, among all the big problems you have, can't we do something about the motor vehicle noise that we have? We've got motorcycles that are riding up and down with scrape pipes, no muffler systems. We have cars that are going up and down our roads with modified muffler systems, and in the back of my house, I have trucks that just come down the road with their engine brakes on, and they just vibrate all the windows. And among all the big problems you have, I would think that'd be a fairly simple problem to take care of.
That is a resource issue, is getting law enforcement in the right spot. Is that worse now than it has been?
Yes, and it's getting worse, even through the rest of town. And also, I've been talking to the sheriff.
Captain Klein?
Captain Klein, yes. And he tells me there's really not much he can do in the way of law enforcement, and I'm here to ask council to come up with a resolution for noise abatement. And it's also a federal law that motorcycles should have some sort of muffler system on them, so I don't know why that's not being enforced.
I
I know you have a lot of problems, but that's a, that's a problem that's a big concern to me and several of my neighbors.
It's a quality of life issue. In Fountain Hills, we enjoy the quiet out here and the beauty, and that goes right in line, so if that's impacting our residents, that is important, so we can look into that. Appreciate you bringing it up. Nice to see you, Mayor Wally. All right. We're going to get into
I think I can do without the mic.
Well, we're being recorded, Bert, so I want to make sure we get it. Hold on, we've got Councilmember Oshambo, or Vice Mayor going to speak to
Councilman Cantino.
I think what we need to look at, can you repeat what he said? I didn't hear everything he said.
Yeah, he's complaining about motorcycle noise and truck braking making noise. It seems to be picking up, and he had said that he spoke with Captain Klein, there seems to be limitations in the laws that allow him to enforce that.
I think we have a fine line here, and I think that if there is a noise problem that is constant, you can always report it, and what you need to do is keep track from when you reported it to when they came out to talk to you, maybe about the noise or what the thing was. The other thing is you need more information of, if you can find the truck or get a license number or something on that, it constantly does it. And I know the braking can do that, because I used to drive semi, so I used to use a brake quite a bit, and I think that we just have to be keeping more track and letting the sheriff know what Klein hates, what's going on.
Well, if I may, the braking noise has been addressed several times in previous council, and I think you might be aware of it. My understanding is they were not allowed to use their engine brake while it's happening.
We'll check on them, we'll check to see if there is, if there is a restriction against that, either at the state or the town level, and we can address it.
The 18-wheelers that come down the highway don't use them, and they're very quiet, the trucks, and the construction guy, and it calls for the motorcycle with scrape pipes. A lot of the motorcycles go right by the house, and they're not moving at all, they have a muffler system. The ones with scrape pipes, they all wait the death of
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Jay, given your slight presentation and the obvious reduction in expenditures this last fiscal year, the two-year lag in the sales taxes, the income taxes, which will start occurring, the 2008 slowdown will probably start hitting in 2010, and you're already telling us that you have to reduce the budget further, aren't you getting to the point where you're running out of room?
Oh, yeah, you know, we're, the staff that's, you know, had to be let go, they're doing something, so that's reducing services, it's reducing ability to respond to things. Other costs continue to go up, you don't expect law enforcement to get cheaper, and in fact, with a declining economy, sometimes the demands on law enforcement are even higher, so there are demands that are going up, and then there are quality of life issues and maintenance issues that there are still demands for, so it is more and more of a challenge. I think we have the right team to do, to meet those challenges, and then on the other side, you've got to have a strong offense to make sure you're making the most of what we can, which is economic development and tourism and helping our businesses to be successful. So getting out of their way so that we can help them to succeed by maintaining the quality of life. So I think we're attacking all those areas with a, with a great staff here and a great council, and of course, the public keeps bringing good ideas up and stepping up to volunteer in places that saves us money as well. But you're right, it's a challenge.
Are you preparing to readdress the secondary property tax?
I'm only one council member, I don't think that's going to be something considered for a period of time, because it was pretty was pretty, pretty significant loss, perhaps, but.
Wait a half second.
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
Are you talking about the primary property tax?
Yeah. That's what I assumed was the primary. Yes, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor?
Thanks for asking that question. And one of the things you need to keep in mind, too, is the sales tax revenue is instant. One of the silver linings that we've been, that we've had all along is, yeah, the state shared revenue as far as income tax is a two-year lag, but the sales tax is instant. And what we've noticed, and if you watch it in the graphs, is even though we might get a reduction in state shared revenues as far as the income tax goes because of the two-year lag, usually by that time, the sales tax is coming back. And so we'll see an increase in sales tax revenue, almost washes that out. But are we watching it? Oh, yeah, you bet you're watching it. We're watching the legislature to see if they're going to mess with our state shared revenue. They did that prior to me getting on board in 2002. And I can remember what it was, was it 13.5% and then they brought it back up to 15%, Julie? Is that correct, or am I off a little bit? Somewhere in there. Okay, it was 14% and they brought it back up. And they, you know, we're watching them because every day, every day I watch the emails, and Katie might be interjecting, or I'll see something from Jenny, Councilwoman Dickey, because she's down there at the legislature and works for DEQ. And we'll see an email that says, the finance committee is in legislates, is in closed-door session, and they're talking about state share revenues. Oh, great, that's, what are they talking about? You know, you can't find out, you know? But trust, trust us, we are all watching this with intensity. They've got our attention. And we're trying to figure out what it is we have to prepare for. And staff and the council, we always try to prepare for the worst and then appreciate if it doesn't get that bad. So to answer your question, is we'll probably be okay, but we don't know yet. And as we know, we've got a very good transparency in government here. You can go look at our budget online, the intricate details there. And trust me, we'll be letting you know if it gets worse.
And speaking about economic development, we'll get into when I introduce our relatively new staff member. I was focused on that. The downturn in the economy forces you to look at, look inward and re, look at retooling and innovative things that the staff continues to bring forward and make hard decisions. One of which was kind of restructuring administration, which, with the advent of Kate Zanin, who was here as our interim town manager and so many other roles prior to that, did such a great job. She left, and we had to deal with that. So that, you know, it was difficult, and we didn't care to have her go because she did a tremendous job. We had to look at it as an opportunity to retool and what adjustments could be made that allowed us to not add more staff and not increase the budget with that, but to have our economic development administrator position be created and then be filled by a person that's extremely talented to help us take on a good, strong offense. And that's Lori Gary over there. Lori, you want to say hello? So that's Lori Gary. If you haven't met her, she's been on for, what, 60 days?
Two months.
Two months, yeah. So this is Lori Gary, and she's responsible. She's responsible for economic development. Want to, yeah, just share what you're, what you've been up to.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Lori Gary, and I am the new Economic Development Administrator for the town of Fountain Hills. And I'm certainly delighted to be on board here. In economic development, there are three areas that we are looking at. One is business attraction, and I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And that's taking a look at different business segments, what would work here in Fountain Hills, and then preparing a strategy to attract new business. The other is business retention. In other words, we want to keep the businesses that we have here currently. And so we are developing a strategy in order to do business retention. And of course, the third is business vitality. We want to help our businesses that are here succeed. We want to help them prosper. And so we're developing a strategy in terms of business vitality. So those are the three areas that we are looking at right now. I am putting together some strategies underneath those three areas. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you, Ken. And economic development-wise, as we talked about our downtown, I know there's some people walking in because some folks think it started an hour, an hour later than it has. So welcome. And we've got three council members here because we can't have a quorum. The other council members will join in the future town halls. And Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to what Lori said. We've had customers come in this week because we are in Fountain Hills for the mobility end of it. They said they saw us two years ago, but they decided to do some shopping online or do something else, and they came back because they couldn't get the service. And I think this is what is really important in our businesses today, is to keep the money in Fountain Hills. And I think as long as we can do that, sell our products or go to your restaurants, then we're going to be all right. But once we start going over the hill, every time we turn around, we're going to defeat our purposes.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, too. A lot of people have come up to me and they say, well, what do you need a development coordinator for? And I said, well, if you had a business and you had some hard times, like we are now, would you stop advertising? I think it's a pretty dumb look, and they go, well, that's Lori's job. She's advertising the town. She's making sure that, she knows where the areas are, what's available, so that when somebody approaches us and says, I've got a business I want to bring to town, here's what I need, she can direct them to the right, right place. And she can also, that business vitality is very, very important. It's like, you don't ever stop advertising, you know, in good times or bad, and especially in bad times. That's, that's when people lose sight of you.
That's also, that time to retool is, is a time for us to look at our partnerships as well and work with the Chamber of Commerce. And business vitality is an effort amongst the chamber, with the town and the, and the chamber and businesses and volunteers working hard together to encourage the vitality of our community. An example of that, there was a more recently passed sign ordinance revision. We didn't go back to where we had a, where we allowed A-frames on, for every 10 feet to where they were, became just a blur of A-frames and looking horrible. But the, the business community ran with a revision on the sign ordinance, and they brought it to the town, and we adopted it. But it came from the businesses. So it was just another way to be more business-friendly for a common term used around town. So that's one effort that Lori is also now engaged in, is our business vitality efforts. Does she have another comment for us?
Yeah, one first comment. I really do admire the town and how you've made adjustments that don't affect any of the quality, such as the four-day work week, where we reduced expenses, however we kept the quality up. And also, the, I just got back into town, but I did read about the parking up at the Botanical Garden that we have, how you rethought that and reengineered it so we could afford it more likely. And I just hope we do that with every single item. My comment to Lori, I think our big challenge, because I travel so much and just actually came back from a small town in, in New Hampshire, we, I think one of our biggest challenges is customer service, which I would love to say this is the friendliest town on the place on the planet and that we have the best customer service, but it simply isn't the truth. And for me, it isn't, and for a number of people that I've talked to. So I think that's one, has to go in your list of things to do. And one place where I really see it showing up is in letters to the editor, which are usually so negative. And of course, they're read all over the country because people have the newspapers sent everywhere. So somehow, if we can change the psychological makeup of our economic development, that would be really, really helpful. Good luck.
Good one.
Good, thank you. Well, we do have, you know, a lot of mom-and-pop retail, a lot of smaller one-store shops here. And I think part of the challenge for customer services, these organizations, if you go down to Scottsdale and get into all the chains you could find in every city, have structured and have management programs and have things. I think it is a little more difficult for the smaller owner to be, to be there. But all, but it is a challenge that needs to be answered because you, you have to have customer service. You just, you have to get, you have to figure out a way to do it. Because people are going to experience services in other places that are very high quality, and you have to compete with that. So it's, it is an excuse I just gave, but you have to get over it. So thank you for sharing that. We have some great shops here, but service is ultimately what brings people back, not just the price, not just the, the product itself, the experience. You have, you have to have an unforgettable experience to bring people back here. So again, if you're just getting here, welcome. You don't, you'll get food at 2:30, should you survive this town hall today. We've got some neat treats out there for you to enjoy. But in the interim, please bring forward any idea, thought, concern, innovation you want to share with us. We'd love to hear. Yes, Bob?
Keith McMahon was a big part of this town. And what are your thoughts on memorial for Keith? Whether it be naming a street, a park, or something, and his honor?
I think that's a great thing to naturally think about. It's going to come up, and somebody's going to come up with the perfect idea, and I would, I would expect that we'll adopt something. We have a policy on naming that we're, that we're looking at on items. I believe generally, you have to be passed for two years, and there's restrictions of what can be either renamed or named. So but, obviously, we'll be looking at that. And I think that's a, I can't imagine not doing something like that at some point. So great, great thought. Guys, good thought.
All right, question over here, comment?
You know, he just mentioned something about renaming something, but all of a sudden, streets came into my mind. Are we still having allotment for some of these bad streets? I mean, talk about potholes. Or somebody go around and drive and see what's, which are, really need some work, which they do. I was wondering, do they lose a lot of money for street repair? Or is that going to be in the budget for next year?
It's smaller, the portion that specifically for that, is that the HERF funding that is declining? And so we have to do more with less. And, but we are on a pavement management plan that, that Public Works is in charge of, and you'll start seeing more work being done. Is there three phases in town? There's a phase over by Shea and Swirl that's going to be taken up here in the neighborhood streets, not the arterials. But do you want to talk to that, Tom and all?
My name's Tom Ward. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town. And we do have a pavement management analysis program that the mayor alluded to. And we try to make it around the town and resurface all of the streets in approximately six years. We may not be in your zone right now. We are resurfacing streets right now, and we'd be happy to take a look at your street if there's some concerns there, if you have specific areas that there's potholes that need to be filled or something. We are, we did cut the budget back for the proposed year to try to save some money and, and also save services. So we'll, but, but we'd be happy to talk to you. And I'm, I'm on the internet, or the website for the town. You can email me anytime.
Someone that, just, the guy that would just walk along and survey, watch streets be done and not wait for like me or Joe or Stan to call up and say, hey, I've got a bad pothole around my street. And then like, we live in a close set, and like the garbage truck, there's four or five different companies that come through the close set. I'm not complaining just about mine. I'm making a statement about some of them when I drive around. And if I, if I see that, I'm going to call up. I mean, should the town have someone that does this?
Sure.
I'm not talking about someone who has a parking record, that's the people that handle that.
Sure, we, we do. And the, and the street department does observe those types of things. And, but I do have to tell you, you know, there's 170 miles of streets, and sometimes it is good for us to receive a call from someone to, because there, we can't, with the small staff, we can't look at every single street every single day. And it could have popped up and been there for a week. We would definitely like to hear from you.
I mean, they break it down into maybe a whole new mile, four miles. Check it out. Okay, we checked that. But within another section, I'm not telling them, somebody just driving around every day and went for a pothole.
Sure.
And that needs work.
That's, that's exactly what the pavement management analysis does, is that we, we look at streets on a regular basis for that analysis.
That'll be different.
No problem.
Not a lot much.
Be, be glad to hear from you.
Thank you again for being here. Yes, let me, okay, we'll go Bob first.
What about the light at Palisades?
Can't hear. Seven?
Look, it's been, that light's been up. It's not functioning. What's the problem?
The question's on the light at Sunrise Canyon in Palisades, the new light there, the shiny new light.
We, I'd like to say it's been a real fun experience, but it hasn't been because we've, we've had a lot of complications that have happened with that signal, and we had some changes that happened through the process. We're very close, we're within days of, or weeks, I'd like to think days, of putting it into a flash mode. It goes into flash mode for two weeks, which is the harshest thing for most people that are in the vicinity of that light, and then it'll go into full activation. So we did have to make a lot of changes with utilities that, what I call buried treasure, that came up. And so, but I think we're very close to having it into full activation.
Great question. All right, Bert?
Jay, Kathy and I, on the weekends, have gone to some of these classic car and muscle car rallies on Indian Bend, and the little one they're trying to get started at our own Target. Could that be a good draw for the Avenue of the Fountains? And it's amazing how many people come to see those cars. And that could feed the retailers, they walk into every store there. And I was amazed at the number of people that come to see those cars. Could we consider that? It's something that the retailers have to get together, the sponsor, and they offer up draw prizes to get these people to come with their cars. It's not a big deal, but it draws a lot of people.
What's your favorite car, by the way?
'37 Chevy.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure that Lori will make a note of that. I think, yeah. In general, in general, you know, we want to help people like you or others that have an interest to help them facilitate those things, not necessarily the town to do it, but for us to help get out of the way to make it, allow it to happen, those types of things. But if there is something that we need to put some resources in that makes sense, we're L'Oreal. Absolutely. So Mike, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, the, the club was asked, actually, that's where we get the most exposure. I belong to that club. And, and we were asked, actually, to be there because it draws the traffic in for Kentucky Fried Chicken and, and the Target store and all that stuff. So we are reaping the sales tax benefit of that. And it would be nice if we had it over here on the Avenue of the Fountains. And guess what? The council just approved, I don't know how many events we're doing on the Avenue of the Fountains, two of them are classic car shows.
So when does this one occur? Is it a regular basis over there at Four Peaks Plaza?
Every Saturday.
Every Saturday, so if anybody.
Our target was every Sunday.
Every Sunday?
Sunday.
Every Sunday at the Target, Four Peaks Plaza.
Every Sunday, every Saturday night at, that's the.
All right, good.
That's the Eagle.
All right, let me get a question or comment back here.
We do have Kentucky Fried Chicken on Sunday where the gentlemen that do have cars and the late, the late-model cars meet. So consequently, maybe you can get with them and expand it.
Good. That's what we're looking for, some more great ideas to stimulate more activity and keep people in Fountain Hills and have a lot of fun. I mean, if you, I think you, we have approved a lot of events of late. I call them parties. And, you know, if you're not going to have a lot of money to do things, you can always get together and have a party, which is a good thing to do as a small town. So Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the other thing, too, we looked at was the farmer's market. A lot of people wanted the farmer's market. And I'm, I'm all for that, and I think that what we have to do is just kind of push it through and get someone that's going to help to coordinate some of that. But the farmer's market was big. And I can remember when there were forty and fifty vendors over there where they got the condos now and the businesses. And it was a thriving thing. But people look towards that and people come down and they say, where's your farmer's market? And I says, it's not. So, we have to get back and get into something like that also.
Good. I think I recall six, eight months ago, the woman that was running that was just, she was just getting kind of worn out from doing it. And that's just an individual that was running it. And we just got to plug in some more resources, more folks that also have the passion to help those things go forward. And then if there's an ability for the town to help or get out of the way again, then we'll consider doing that also. So, I don't see any hands up, any other comments, questions, concerns? Anything council members would like to share, updates on items? Anything from the staff you wish to talk to? Anyone from the staff want to share any updates? The cobbler's not quite ready. I see some people going for the door to the cobbler. Probably people watching, streaming online, they're probably just coming for the cobbler here in the lobby at Town Hall. Yes?
Hey, I...
Yes?
This is just out straight off the... But...
Are we surveying other small towns, same demographics, psychographics, and finding out what they're doing to possibly cut down on revenue or bring in new revenue or cut down town expenses? And once again, my experience in New London, New Hampshire, I just started talking to their town and it was just interesting what they're doing.
Yeah. Laurie, you want to speak on that? I do have a lot of individuals that bring those great ideas forward and that's always a good resource to get them from residents in our town that say, I used to live here and here's what we did. Those are great things to bring forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a little short snippet of information on economic development and that question will lead me into a little bit longer answer. First of all, I wanted to let you all know that absolutely I'm involved in some statewide organizations and some national organizations that certainly allow us to tap into that expertise. And that is the Arizona Association for Economic Development, which is statewide, and also the IEDC, which is the International Economic Development Council, which actually is international. And so, I do tap into that resource for us. For example, when we talk about performance metrics, how do we know we're there? You know, how do we...and how do we get there? And if we're having any challenges, then I am able to reach out to my colleagues in other states and other areas and actually overseas in Canada also to ask them those questions. And which is very interesting and then we take that, then I take that information and say, how can we make that work for Fountain Hills? The other area, when I talked about business attraction, and we chatted a little bit about what that is, and that's bringing new business in, and then we're going to have some strategies associated with that. And one of the strategies that I'm putting together right now is a retail attraction strategy. And so, it's interesting that you would ask that question because I was in last week talking to my boss, Rick Davis, and said, here's my proposal on what we need to do. And part of that is taking a look at, with Julie's help, taking a look at our retail tax revenue, taking a look at the retailers that we currently have here, where they're located, what type of business they have, and if there are any gaps that we can attract businesses in those gaps. And some of the things that we will be doing in the next couple of months is a retail trade area analysis, which will tell us how far our draw is to bring people in here. We're talking about doing some of those psychographic studies to say, what are people in Fountain Hills spending their money on? What in what segments and what areas or segments are people in Fountain Hills spending their money on? And then comparing that to the actual retail sales tax in those segments so that we can see where those gaps are. And so, if we found that everybody likes pizza and everybody's spending money on restaurants and pizza, but we don't have any pizza places here, then I know, for example, that would be a target for me to go after. Yeah. Just as, that was just as an example. Just an example. That was one of the things that...
That's what I meant, yeah.
And that was just an example on how we get at that gap analysis. But absolutely, we're taking a look at psychographics. We're taking a look at what is our true primary retail trade area? What is our secondary retail trade area? What is our outreach? What gaps do we have? And so, that is all part of our retail strategy that we're putting together. So, the answer is absolutely, we're taking a look at that. And in terms of business attraction, retail is just one strategy we're putting together and there'll be a variety of other things we're working on. And if I might, Mayor, take one more minute to talk about the customer service issue that was brought up. That is actually what I would consider under business vitality. And we're looking at perhaps what strategies we can do to outreach to some of the existing businesses here to help support them. And one of the support areas would be customer service. And just two weeks ago, I had a webinar. We're also in touch with the National Main Street Organization and had a webinar from the National Main Street Organization. And one of the things that they talked about in that webinar is when you have people coming into town and Fountain Hills has fabulous, fabulous events, which was alluded to here, how do we get not only feet on the streets, but how do we get those feet into the stores? And then, once they get into the stores, what are their experience in those stores to keep them coming back? And so, those sort of business vitality programs have been kicked off and are underway. So, that's part of our strategy also.
Good. Thank you, Laurie. Now, we've got a lot of, some things to get the frameworks put together, but I do also know that she's busy meeting with people that might be an end user or an interested party. I'm going to go over here first.
Thank you, Jay. Laurie, piggybacking on your comment, we have two premier golf courses in the community. And tournaments, as you know, run several days, approximately a week to two weeks. That draws a lot of people, a lot of attention, and of course, all the people who are participating, and I mean the golfers as well as their family, their coaches, their trainers, et cetera, their residents in here for that period of time. It would seem to me that would be a natural with Eagle Mountain, Fire Rock, Sunridge Canyon, those are three premier golf...and Wicopa, yes, thank you very much. But they can actually go from course to course because that's what the tournaments like to do. They don't like it all in one course. They like it to be shared because it provides some variety, if you will, for those golfers. But Eagle Mountain has been rated number one public course in the community, in the state, a few years ago. And Wicopa was the same designer that built Eagle Mountain. So, that would be a food for thought in terms of tournaments somehow for the town to support or give them a network, if you will, to explore that with the businesses.
Yes, and the golf, Frisbee Golf just had the national tournament here two weeks ago, I think it was? Oh, yes. Another question here? I think that's a great suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor. In the paper about the trash hauling situation, what's going to be the next step? Because the town's 50-50 on the survey. And then I have another question.
All right. What's your preference? No, I'm just kidding. You've probably already, you already probably responded.
I want the same rate people not to get, why not?
She likes single hauler at the cheapest rate you can get. And as far as that, we were going to have it come to the Council on an agenda and now we're probably going to look for it in a little while to come to us as a work study. Is that correct? As far as us talking about that further, no actions going to be taken in a little while. We're still looking at it further. There's some challenges before us that we need to, we're identifying and then also considering further. No decisions have been made. Public input's always appreciated and we received a great deal of that, as well as the survey you alluded to that was kind of split down the middle, which was a use of a new tool we just put onto the website, which was great to use and a lot of folks took advantage of it. I'll come back for your other question. Did you want to comment at all on the trash or Rick Davis?
The idea of moving towards a one trash hauler type of scenario isn't as simple as simply declaring it and simply...yeah, a lot of you are very surprised about that. But it is obviously a benefit to take more trucks off the roads, we think. But at the same time, we need to be sensitive to the level of service we're receiving, the pricing to our residents, and there's so many other factors coming into play. Of course, we're very concerned about not only the condition of our roads, but our environment, our natural environment here. Remember, the Fountain Hills is not just the recipient of its own air particulates, but we seem to be the stopping ground for a lot of other things that float through the valley, as it were. So, we, above all other towns and cities, need to be conscious of every option that we have in order to improve our natural environment here. That's how we're going to continue to live and be a healthy community. And we have to consider these types of initiatives. They're very, very important to us.
Rick, those things floating in the air are dynamic and diverse bird population. There are no bad things in the air in Fountain Hills, although we do have an ozone challenge. Maybe that's what you're speaking to. Air is very important to the quality of life in Fountain Hills and the valley in particular.
I'd just like to see a show of hands, how many people participated in the hazardous collection day that we had? Anybody? How many participated in the hazardous collection day that we had? I want you guys to understand that that costs $24,000 to put it on. And then money has to come from somewhere and we should appreciate the fact that we got a $19,000 grant to pay for that, most of that. But here's another, here's another point that I wanted to make because it, people tend to forget, and most of the hazardous waste that was brought to that center was paint. And paint can be reused. And I talked to, in fact, I had gathered about 15 gallons of paint and was going to actually take it down there, but I found out that, I was talking to Gordon Pitsenberger, who goes to Christ Church, and they go down to Mexico and build these houses. And I said, hey, Gordon, you need some paint to paint these houses with? He said, well, we'll certainly leave them there for the people to paint their houses. And five gallons will actually paint one house. These houses are not very big. So, I'm encouraging you that if you have some paint and you want to get it off your hands, it has to, it has to be actual applicable paint. If it's already hardened and it's solidified in that gallon can, it's not hazardous waste anymore and you can just throw it away. So, a lot of people have held on to that. And I had this can that was like about that full, it was just solid. And I laid that can up and I go like, oh, well, this is, this is just pigment now and that pigment is not the hazardous waste. It's the liquid that was the hazardous waste. In my business, I own a cabinet shop, we have our hazardous waste, a 55-gallon drum that we get rid of. We also have part of our hazard, it's not actually hazardous waste at that point, but the drop off that hits on the floor in our spray booth, when we sweep that up, that's not hazardous. Now, it's not something that I would eat, but it's just like something else. You can take and throw it away. So, if you've got something that's actually done and is no longer has, it has any liquid in it, you can just throw that away if it's the paint, if it's water-based paint. Now, there are some, there are some chemicals out there that you can't just throw away. You have to bring the hazardous waste down. But the reason I'm saying this is because Christ Church will probably take all your paint that you want to deliver over there. And what they do is they batch it together and they come up with whatever color that is, you know? And they take it, they take it and they use it for people that, even in downtown Phoenix where they're maybe doing a rehab project or something and they're helping, not only helping their own repaint their house, maybe it's not going to be white, but it won't be gray, it might be a tin color, you know? So, they use that. And I want people to understand that they can get rid of that. That was the bulk of what we hauled away. And if we'd eliminated a lot of that paint, we could have taken a lot more stuff. And what happened was, actually, Raymond was telling me, we had eight five-gallon pails delivered to us that had never been opened. And they took it and they put it in the dumpster and I saw Raymond after the event and it got hauled away. And he said, oh, Raymond, I would have taken those pails off your hands because I know where they could have gone and done some good. Also, the other thing that people don't think about is you can use the graffiti patrol goes around and they need, they need paint to do this with. And they'll actually take, I think Phoenix does this, they'll take the hazardous waste, the paint that you no longer want, and they'll use it to go and paint up graffiti. And maybe it'll be a perfect match, but it'll be close.
All right, good. Two more comments from the public and then I'll, we'll close up and get to some cobbler. All right. Oh, yeah, I promised you in the back I'd get to your second question. Hopefully, it'll be easy for me to answer.
It has to do with our roads. I live on Richwood and we've noticed three big school buses that travel our street, you know, twice a day. And can kids start walking? We can eliminate, you know, the traffic and they would get exercise because all the kids could walk from our neighborhood to all the schools. So, we did that for years.
There happens to be a school board member in the room. I won't point him out, but that'd be something to bring up with the school board, the school district. But yes, thank you.
I have a question in regards to rubbish pickup, if anybody knows the answer. Because we do not have a lot of rubbish frequently, you know, but we have twice-a-week pickup. I won't mention which one, but when I called about a year ago or so and said, do you have a price for once-a-week pickup? And I was told that Maricopa County requires twice-a-week pickup of rubbish. Does anybody know if that's true or not?
Yes.
That is, okay.
And Councilmember Cant, Vice Mayor Arshambo's looked into that in the past. Do you believe that is true?
Yeah, that came...
Hold on.
Yeah, that's an actual statute and it's in the, and I can't remember what the statute numbers are. Julie, you remember what they are? Yeah, I couldn't tell you right off the bat. But it is in the Arizona revised statute, it's a requirement that refuge pickup is twice a week. And it's under the health services. Geez, I wish I could remember that number. There was years when I could, I could just spit it right out to you because I'd read it, you know? But it is in the statute, it's a requirement. And whether you need it twice a week or not is immaterial. You have to have the pickup twice a week. Now, if you don't put your can out there, they're just not going to come by and pick it up.
Well, in terms of having trucks from the...
I understand. I understand. And that's why we're trying to look at a service where you would get the refuge picked up once a week and then recycling done, the second pickup. Recycling would be, if any of you went to the open house that we had, it would be done through Recycle Bank, which the contractor or the hauler would contract with. And Recycle Bank would give you, actually pay you back for your recycles. And the numbers I've heard is anywhere from, the average customer with Recycle Bank gets anywhere from $20 to $30 a month back, either in coupons to go to the Safeway or your favorite grocery store with, or coupons to go to Paul's Hardware if you want a coupon, you know, cash coupon to do that with, or you can put it on a card, like something like a credit card where you get a, you know, you get those bonus cards or you get your bonus points, you know, and then you turn them in for, card to Red Lobster or something, however you want that, that's how you'll get that money back to you. You can get it in a card that's just a card that you can use to go spend on whatever you want. Go, Dennis, you have some more?
Yeah, I think that once we start that, you're going to find the people that are dumpster diving going into garbage can diving and they're going to take all that so they can get the big coupons. But I want to change the subject real quick with Laurie. We're looking back at something that I think is going to be kind of nice or I'd like to see come back is the Fourth of July out here. I think that we need to do that. Our service clubs made a lot of money during that time of the Fourth of July and it helped our revenues during the summertime to go all the way straight through. And I'm kind of happy for that because we need something like that to keep us going and we need something to take the place of, everybody can remember, White Castle days. So, those are things that we need to get back to.
A U.
Yeah. And I think that we need to get back to some of that to raise revenues, to help our business, get people in Fountain Hills to see what Fountain Hills is all about.
Awesome, awesome input here. We're going to wrap up our input here. Hert, thank you for more ideas here to share, but the Town Hall continues nonstop with email, phone calls, and you can contact council member staff at any time. As we wrap up here, one want to make sure, I thank everybody that put in the time to come out here and share your ideas and passions, concern for the town. Everybody has that that's here and we're all looking to make the improvements we can as smart as we can with as little revenue as it takes and with the help of resources of organizations and volunteers. I think council members Cantino and Vice Mayor Arshambo for being here and appreciate everybody keeping Keith and Keith McMahon in prayers and his family as we'll be looking forward to his service in April when his family is able to get down here. I think it's a Thursday, I think it's 23rd, 23rd of April at four o'clock at Christ Church, if you haven't heard, will be a service for Keith McMahon. It'll be followed up by a reception here at the lobby of our community center at five o'clock. And then I know we have a, appropriately, a chamber mixer after that, which Keith never missed. So, keep Keith and his family and we're there with you if you're mourning as well. Let me mention some of the other town events happening over the next period of time. Today, we have in fact, at three o'clock, Fountain Park Performance Pad has a free performance by Saunas, is that the, Shaunas? Shaunas, thanks, Mark. They play Spanish guitar at three o'clock down at Performance Pad. And then tomorrow is the Paws in the Park Adoption Day. I believe it starts at 10:00 tomorrow, Sunday. And then we have, does somebody know if that time is correct or incorrect out there? All right, I think it's 10:00 tomorrow. And then April 4th, there's quite a bit happening, Extravaganza at Golden Eagle Park, thanks to the Goyanas, 12,000 stuffed eggs and kids that pick them up in about 20 seconds. It's just amazing, but they're also, fortunately, I think, Coan's Pancake Breakfast is also in conjunction to that, that same time. So, that'll be a great time out there at Golden Eagle Park on the 4th. And then that... And then that evening, once you digest your pancakes and your Easter egg candy, you come out to Movie in the Park and watch Kung Fu Panda at the Fountain Park, thanks to MCO's Natalie, Natalie Varelli and numerous other sponsors. Just one of those more and more fostering of events and public-private partnerships to bring White Castle Days, whatever it is. We'd love to have more events out here in Fountain Hills and it's in fact, our goal as Town Council. As I mentioned, the next community Town Hall will be in the summer, so stay tuned. We'll have two additional council members here. Again, they, it'll be streamed over the internet and you can probably re-watch it if you were on the edge of your seats and missed some things here for this time. But I want to thank everyone that came here. Thanks for your, sharing your skills, your talents and your gifts with our community and within our community. Keep up the good work and we'll get through this economic downturn strongly and better than we were when we entered it and looking forward to our next Town Hall. Thank you so much and enjoy the cobbler out there. It looks terrific. Have a great day, have a great weekend.